This is pretty cool.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think you can begin.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dave. Good morning and welcome. I'm Mo Handel, Select Board Chair. First, we'll confirm that participating members of both the Select Board and the Council of Economic Advisors and others anticipated to be on the agenda are present and able to hear me during this joint meeting of the Select Board and the Council of Economic Advisors. I am joined by Adam Block, who is the Chair of the Council of Economic Advisors as well for this meeting. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Excuse me. For the Select Board, Matt Borelli.
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes.
John Bullion.
Yes.
Thank you. For the Council of Economic Advisors, starting with the Chair, Adam. Sorry? Somebody say something? Adam Block.
Yes, here, present.
Vice Chair Anne Marie Dowd.
Yes, here.
Adam Meisner.
Here.
Bill Day.
Yes.
David Montgomery.
Here.
Glenn Camerano. Matthew Telkoff. Mike Wilcox.
Here.
Rick Prush. Bob Henshaw.
Yes.
Stu Agler. Tina Burgos. Virginia Fleischer.
Here.
Have I missed anyone from the Council of Economic Advisors? Thank you. For the Town, Town Staff Kate Fitzpatrick, Town Manager. Is Kate here?
I think she's having technical difficulties, but she will be coming on.
Okay. Would you let me know when she is on, David, and I'll get her in on the record? Dave Davidson.
Here.
Lee Newman. Daphne Collins.
Here.
Roger McDonald.
Here.
Have I missed anyone? Our presenters from Babson College, who are anticipated to be on the agenda. I need to, I'll go from my screen, and I apologize if I miss anyone or mispronounce any names. And I'll just go in the order that I have on the screen. Man Yu. Jason Kong.
Yes.
Dan Edelbeck.
Yep, here.
Sam Wang.
Here.
Arlene McCormick.
Here.
Yvette Gu.
Yes, here.
Bob Bonneville. Bonneville.
Here.
David, let's see. I have to turn the page.
More in George Lee.
Did I miss anyone? Have I missed anyone from Babson College?
George Lee from Babson College.
Thank you, George. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with the current state regulations and is being recorded. It is being convened through Zoom app, as posted on the Town's website, which spells out how the public may gain access. Some attendees are here via that video conference. Public access does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting does not have a public comments section. Please also be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything you share or state will be captured by the recording and become a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are or will be available on the Town's website, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Before I turn the floor over to Adam Block, who chairs the Council of Economic Advisors, I would ask that everyone please mute their phones or devices when they are not speaking. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps assure accurate public minutes. Please wait until recognized by name, and please also state your name again before speaking. And finally, any vote taken during this meeting will be by roll call vote for each of the participating bodies. And for purposes of any potential vote, I will call the roll. Thank you very much. I would like to introduce and thank the Chair of the Council of Economic Advisors, Adam Block. Adam, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. About a year ago, the Town of Needham made an application through the Needham Economic Development Office to the Babson Management Consulting Field Experience Program. This is a highly competitive co-op program between client entities such as McKinsey Consulting, the Boston Red Sox, and the Town of Needham on the one hand, and various teams consisting of juniors, seniors, and graduate candidates from Babson on the other hand. The purpose of the Town's consulting engagement with Babson was to study key performance indicators to be used as metrics as part of an economic scorecard the Town can use to measure the performance of Needham's economy. This analytical tool enables the Town to establish certain goals to measure against in future years. In addition, our consultants created a catalog or an inventory of business which reveals the size, scope, and composition of businesses operating within the Town's commercial use districts. A dense research and analytical-based consulting project is a challenging endeavor for the most talented under the best of times. During this assignment, however, our consulting team had to adapt their game plan as a result of the current global public health emergency. Their ability to continue their research, to create new lines of communication, to conduct their analysis suddenly from far points around the United States and the world, and to sustain their high level of engagement speaks volumes of their hard work, determination, and professional conduct. Our consulting team is here today to present their work product. With gratitude and with the indulgence of the Chair of today's meeting, may we ask our team to present?
Yes, we are ready for that.
Excellent. So I guess I'd like to start with Dan. I'm going to pass the presentation over to you.
Sure, Adam. Again, Dan Edelbeck, I'm a graduate candidate at Babson College, studying Masters in Business Administration. And I am going to pass the floor over to Jason Kong, one of the student McPhee consultants, who will introduce the, start, share his screen and introduce the presentation.
Sure. This is Jason. So now I'm going to share my screens so everyone can see our presentation here. Okay. So can everyone see the presentation now?
And I would just like to say one thing. For people that maybe aren't as familiar with Zoom, probably you can see the screen, the presentation in the background, and then on the right, you can maybe see some faces. And there'll be little squares on top of the faces. One is like a big, like nine squares, one is two squares, one is one square. If you pick up the one square, you'll just see the presenter's face, and you won't see the rest of our faces, and it'll take up less of your screen. So if everyone wants to take, you know, 10 seconds to try that out, it might help with our presentation so that the images don't take up the whole screen.
Great. So I'll start. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our McPhee Town of Needham meeting. My name is Jason, and today I'm here with my teammates. I'm going to introduce myself first, and I'm going to pass the floor to my teammates as well to let them introduce themselves. So, as I just said, my name is Jason. I'm a current senior at Babson College, concentrating strategy management and finance. And right now, I'm living in Newton, and I'm going to, planning to move to Cambridge soon. And now I'm going to pass it forward to Yvette.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yvette Bu. I'm currently a sophomore at Babson College, concentrated in business analytics and consulting. I'm also a resident of Newton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Man Yu. I'm a fellow advisor at Babson. I'm proud of being a resident of Needham. I'm currently living in Modera, Needham, New York.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sam. I'm a current sophomore at Babson. My concentration is computational and mathematical finance. And I'm also a current resident at Needham.
Thanks, Sam. And I'm Dan Edelbeck. I'm a MBA candidate at Babson College. I was living in Austin, but now I'm currently in Michigan. And I've had a really enjoyable experience this semester, working with the entire Town of Needham, as well as our student consultants. And I'll give the floor back to Jason.
Great, thanks, Dan. Now let's get started. So I'm going to go over our agenda for today's. So at the beginning, we will go over our milestone review to take a look at what we have done in the past. And also, we'll share our project procedures to show you how we approach our objectives. And third, and we're going to talk about our highlights and insights from our projects. And then next, we are going to share some of our lessons that we have learned from this terrific experience. And last but not least, we'll give some deepest appreciation to our Needham colleagues. So now I'm actually going to jump right into our milestone review. So our story actually starts here. After going over the agendas, I'm going to jump right into here and talk about some challenges that the Town of Needham faces. And which is, how does the Town attract new business? What factors make it more attractive? How can it attract its performance in areas that's for a great place for new businesses to establish themselves? The Town was set on finding the answer and to see questions. And specifically, the Town wanted to create an economic scorecard to measure the Town's of Needham's economic performance and to be used by various government departments, communities, forces, and to inform the public policy. We were lucky that the Town of Needham reached out to Babson College and find student consultants that could evaluate the Town's economic performance across various key indicators. We went through the thought process. Imagine a town outside of a beautiful city in Boston, and there has been a successful town. Your residents are very happy. And imagine that often receive a compliment on the amount of the business that your, that your town is in. Also, imagine you wanted to ensure that you can create and stimulate new innovation and make it more attractive place for new businesses to come and develop. This was a thought that Needham had. And in doing this evaluation, the Town realized that it need to have a better metrics to assess how they could best position themselves and to make for attractive pace for the new business. The key metrics result in the end of the project objectives, which we were to deliver over the course of the project. And the objectives were develop a comprehensive data set of the Needham business located within the Town's business zoning district. Also, identify Needham's business by sectors. Collect Town's metrics that can be best used to measure the local economy and utilize the established consulting framework to assist the communication with the Town and regarding how we can arrive at our result. And here are some of our key insight after four months of our work. So from the database that we developed, we noticed that the industry mix of the local business at Needham and the key of the industries are the service, financial business, and retail. These are the three largest major categories. And also, on the other hand, the business zones distributions are really fragmented. And we also noticed there's a significance of the home business, which is accounts for 31.5% of the overall business at Needham. And from the economic scorecard, we also established the metrics can be best used to monitor the Town's economic performance, which included the forming categories, which are the economic, commercial building, housing, and finance. Next, I'm going to talk about the milestones. So we actually start off our relationship with our Needham colleagues from our kickoff meeting. Over there, we have a brief discussion, and we really get to know each other. And from the day one, we are really happy with our relationship, and we move on to our engagement contract to have a better understanding of our projects and also to pinpoint what are some methodologies that we can use to achieve our objectives. And then we move on to our data collection process. We're starting our preliminary research, and we funded more than 30 data sources online with over 80,000 data entries. And we narrowed down the datas, we cleaned up the data as well. We removed some of the duplicates, and we also removed some of the missing datas as well. And last step, we do the business zoning identification. And overseer actually faced some challenging at the beginning. But luckily, we were scheduled a zoning tour and really help us to correlate the knowledge that we've been from our data set and to see in person and to have a better understanding of the local business and also to understand how the zoning work out. And that really helped us to speed up the process and also help us to really achieve and deliver the result for the deadline. And last but not least, we did a comprehensive analysis on the data set and also on the key metrics for the economic scorecard, and we illustrate these results on the Town's website. And next, I'm going to share with you some of the variable pictures that we have been taking or the screenshot during this tremendous process. So first is our kickoff meeting. We can see from everyone's happy face, it is definitely a great meeting at the beginning. It really set out for our success for this whole semester. And then it's our engagement contract. And here, as I just mentioned, we talk about the projections, objectives, and defines the project scope, and more importantly, pinpoint the project methodology, how to achieve our objectives. And next is our lovely Needham zoning tour. And here, we actually want to give a special thanks to Lee Newman, really gave us a five-star tour. Not only teach us and let us learn more about the Town's local business, but also her knowledge and insight really helped us to prepare and expedite the process of business zoning identification in the later part. And also, we really appreciate the Town's effort to really help us spread the word, make our friends and our family all knows about what we are doing here. And here, we also want to shout out to Daphne Cohen and help us to really let all of the people around us know what we are doing. And from here, we are definitely very decided to put in the best effort and help the Town to achieve those objectives. And last but not least, it's our visualization analysis. And here is just a very high-level chart, and my teammates will go more in-depth about this, but just a high-level insight. And I just mentioned earlier, the service is the largest business industry at Needham. So now I'm going to pass to my teammate Sam, and he will get us over our project procedures and also some of our key results.
Oh, this is Sam. So I'm going to introduce to all of you about our project procedure. So the process overview of the project is in total of three steps. First one is the preliminary research, where we reach out different town departments and research on different databases to identify the datas that we can include into the economic scorecard and also the business database. And also, for the next step, we did a database development where we merged different databases collected from different sources and identify the zoning categories. And the last step for the database is that we did a business verification, where we did web search, phone call, and storefront visits for the existence of businesses. For the preliminary research, each team member of us was assigned to find five different sources. And these sources are majorly utilized as a component of our database or as a tool to verify the existence of the businesses. For the database development, we, the database we developed consists of three different databases. The first one is the database from the Health Department. And here, I want to give a special thank to Timothy McDonald for offering us this excellent data. It helped us to find all of the chain stores that are not registered in Needham but operating here. And also, we merged the US biz data, which is a source we find from online database. It consists of over 10,000 records. It has a lot of information, as you can see here, but there's also a lot of duplicates and needs a lot of work on it. The last database we use is the Chamber of Commerce data. One thing, thank to Greg Reitman for offering us this database. It consists of 937 records. It is mostly the significant and well-known business in Needham. After collecting all three databases, we merged them together, and we have to remove the duplicates. We filter all the companies by their name and address and remove the ones that are duplicated in name and addresses. And also, we removed the ones having an empty address field, which is pretty inaccurate in the database. After finishing developing the database, we enter another column called zoning categorization. So it is the specific business zone that the business locates in. We find out the Needham zoning map and hand-type all of the street map index into Excel. And then we assign each of the business to the street index that they may occur in. And we manually draw out all of the street indexes on the zoning map and identify one by one that, within each of the index, which business zone is included. After this, we replace all of the street indexes with the business zone that potentially occur within that index and assign each of the business to the potential business zones that may occur in. And for the last step, we did a, we did a manual screening and assigned the business zone that each of the business is specifically located to each one of them. And from there, we can draw out some conclusion. And after finishing all of the data for the database, we did a business verification. We pull out 5% of the overall informations for all of the businesses. And we verified them through web search, phone calls, or even storefront visits. And we marked the ones have some information change in yellow, and the ones are no longer existing in red. And we find that our database has over 85% accuracy, which is pretty good at the current level. And we were pretty satisfied with the result. And after building the database, we did an economic scorecard. The economic scorecard consists of four different matrix, the economics, commercial building, residential building, residential housing, and also finance. We want to thank to Adam Block by providing the residential housing information. And also, thank to Dave Davidson for providing the finance information. And then I'm going to share some of the result highlight we draw from the database. For the insight on the database, I'm going to first dig into the business zones. We find out that most of the, most of the businesses occur in the single residence areas. The single resident area is the biggest area having most businesses. And it means that the home businesses is actually very significant in the Town of Needham. And we also discovered that the New England Business Center is performing extremely well. It is the first largest commercial business zone for Needham. And as, and relate to its relatively new position, that we are very satisfied to see how well New England Business Center is performing currently. And also, we find out there's a pretty even distribution between the businesses in Needham Heights and the downtown area, meaning that at the two most concentrated place in Needham, residents there enjoy a very diverse businesses subset, satisfying their needs for their life. And after this, we look into, look into the sub-industries. So we first look into the overall industry, and we find out the service is actually the biggest industry. And, and also, the second and third significant industry is the finance, insurance, and real estate and the retail trade industry sector. And we find out there's actually pretty good even distribution between the rest of the industries. And it means that Needham gets a very diverse industry sets. And there are enough businesses to satisfy the need of residents in every perspective. And also, we're looking forward to see the effort that Needham potentially will give on the, on the coronavirus impact, because the virus, the coronavirus impact will heavily influence the three, the three tops, the three top industries of the industry distribution. And, and because service counts for such a portion of the industry overall, we dig into the sub-industries within the service industry. And we find out that the attorney office, the customer computer programming service, and also the accountants are the three most significant sub-industries within service industry. And we also did a tree map on the, on the, on all of the sub-industries. And there are over 600 sub-industries overall for Needham. And it provides a very diverse profile. And looking into this graph, we can find that restaurants and services are identified in different ways. So there does not really appear in this tree map in terms of sub-industry. And also, we can see the significance of the insurance agency brokerage and real estate brokers and agents. And especially for the sub-industry on the left column, there are all the, they are the top six sub-industry occurred the most for Needham. And this graph can be utilized further by the Town of Needham, looking to what kind of sub-industries are included in the, in the town. And also, we draw some insight on the sub-industry distribution. Only including the sub-industries occur over 10 times. And here's a pie chart we graphed out of that result. And basically, this is the top seven sub-industries contains the most businesses within Needham. And then I'm going to introduce Man Yu to talk about the economic scorecard.
Thank you, Sam. So here is our Town of Needham's economic scorecard. The Town of Needham is performing strongly in the perspective of economy. We did develop the economic scorecard based on four key performance variables, economic, commercial building, housing, and finance. To discover a lot of positive change, and I will talk about some of the significant ones here. For this field of economy, we discovered that the Town's asset value has For this field of economy, we discovered that the town's asset value power keeps increasing for the year 2017, the year 2019, benefiting both the residents and investors. We can also discover that the median household income of the town is over two times higher than the national average and remaining an upward increase. For the commercial building sector, the town is showing a step forward in terms of the value of the commercial projects for new constructions. The town's new construction value reached a pick-off over $60 million in the year of 2018. Even with the slowing down in new construction from 2018 to 2019, the new construction commercial value is still above 1.6 times higher than the value of new construction in the year of 2017. It shows a tremendous effort for the Town of Needham. I'll check this. And we can also see that the value of commercial renovations decreasing the year 2018 to the lowest point and raise back to the level of $48 million in the year 2019. We consider this to be a sign of Town of Needham's effort in balancing the budget on the new construction and the old property renovation. Going forward with this balance, the town will be able to satisfy me for new and existing businesses. For the housing section, we cannot underestimate increment of median house, median home value. But the Town of Needham is also giving its effort in terms of affordable housing and increase the number of supported houses in this area. Last analysis, for the finance section, the town expects increase with the revenue. This is a positive trend, meaning that the Town of Needham not only generates more revenue every year, but also uses them to benefit the local residents more and more. It is also stunning that the town's brand rating is very strong throughout the three years at AAA level. But we also look into the AICMA of Town of Needham. The AICMA is the Resident Effects Analysis Survey. And we discovered that the town is performing excellent in terms of the overall community appearance. And now I'm going to look at some significant ones to talk about. The AICMA index shows that the town is positively represented at different perspectives. The public highly appreciate the public transportation development, especially in terms of the development. And the natural environment is also a highlight of Needham. The seriousness is highly acknowledged and appreciated. This is tremendous effort for the Town of Needham. And there is also a significant improvement in terms of the health and wellness by increasing healthcare and recreational opportunities. The last analysis, children are enjoying the life in Needham because of all the education and enrichment opportunities. Not only in terms of education, but also in the enrichment of their interests. Here are also some of the areas we can see the opportunities for improvement. First, traffic is always a problem for everything. Managing the traffic flow and improve the convenience of traveling by bicycle would be love by the residents. And affordable housing is also great opportunities for Needham to increase their rent satisfaction. Also, it shows up as opportunities to improve. It is understandable that the current number of affordable housing is due to Needham's relatively high social status. We also see this is one of the largest opportunities. It's very interesting that we see the residents may want better street repair and lighting. But as residents in Needham, we're very satisfied with the current condition. Lastly, the residents shows a desire for more visibility of the local public meetings. And we're fully honored being a forward staff for Needham in terms of this opportunity. And next, Yvette will talk about lessons learned.
Thank you, Manu. I'm Yvette. And next, I will talk about the lessons we learned from this project. The process itself is a lesson. We work as a team and during the process, we practice professional communication by many methods. We also improve our research and refine ability and Excel skills during database construction. We apply creative thinking and critical thinking when solving the problem. Especially during the global crisis, we adapted to changes deal with all conflict within the team to produce the best result and showed excellent time management. The first thing I would like to talk about is creative problem solving. We overcame challenges and used a job approach. That means we solve the problems step by step and ask for the town's feedback weekly so that we are able to achieve greatest efficiency and most ideal solution. The next is professional communication. We use multi-channel communication, including emails, weekly phone conference, and face-to-face meetings with the Town of Needham. We also learned plenty of Excel skills as we were constructing the database and creating economic scorecard. In addition, doing research and refine process, we deploy a comprehensive reach strategy. We first brought a scope and find as much information as we can. And then we precisely identify the most critical information for this project and clean the data. We leverage multiple resources, including US biz data or departments from Town of Needham and the Chamber of Commerce. In this way, we ensure the comprehensiveness of the database and the validity of the economic scorecard that can best evaluate Needham's performance. We demonstrated excellent time management during the process. We strictly follow the timeline that was designed at the beginning of the project. Especially during the outbreak of COVID-19, we adjusted our timeline frequently any time so that we managed to achieve the most efficiency. Here, we would like to thank Roger McDonald for setting up Zoom meeting and giving advice on the website. And Emma Reidoff for valuable feedback and help with our deliverables. Speaking of teamwork and conflict, we leverage on each team member's areas of speciality and assign interim role that are best fit with each stress. For example, Dan is the leader of our project that always supports the team and gives valuable feedback. Jason is the client relationship manager who is in charge of communicating with the town and updating our latest progress. Sam is the research manager that integrates all data we collected and use methods such as Python to make best use of the data and constructed a solid and comprehensive database. Manu, as a timekeeper, frequently updated timeline and kept a smooth workflow for the team. And I am the note taker of the team, who is responsible of taking notes during all meetings, providing meeting summary to ensure that we are on the same page with the town. During this project, the team has many different opinions. But after communicating and challenging each other's ideas through group discussion, we arrived at a better approach or method with the team's collective intelligence. A critical method that we applied to the project with Needham is Babson's ETNA. It is called entrepreneur thought connection. And it helps us to switch goals when we meet obstacles and learn from our past experiences when facing the unknown. At the beginning of the project, we thought of a direct path from the question to the result. However, during the process, we encountered a lot of obstacles, including the technical problem when constructing our database and the changes during COVID-19. However, by adjusting goals at each step, we finally achieved the ultimate goal. Next, I will pass to Manu for our final words.
Thank you, Yvette. And last, I want to thank all members of Town of Needham, especially six people meeting with us every week. Adam, Emery, Dave, Stephanie, Lee, and Roger. First, we want to thank all being enthusiastic. Also, letting you help to everyone to recap the next team project. Recap the entire process of the next team project. We start the project by pulling all the data together and building the database. Then we finalize the database by entering critical information, such as business stocks. Then we draw a conclusion from the database, use the information from different departments to build an economic scorecard. After receiving feedback from the Town of Needham, we did a high-level scorecard visualization. Finally, we arrive at our final report and our final presentation. And I want to thank all members. As first, we want to thank all of being enthusiastic during the project. You're always positive and encouraging when you face different problems. You're always open-minded and understanding towards us while providing critical feedbacks. And we feel that we're becoming not only the students' consultants, but also your good friends. And we deeply appreciate the support you offer from multiple dimensions. You're always there whenever we need help while being accountable and flexible. And we also want to thank you all for the efficiency. You're on time for every single meeting and even help us to stay ahead of schedule. We feel that without your efficiency, our team cannot be as successful as we are now. And lastly, our team wants to thank you all for the opportunities you provide to us. With this helpful opportunity, we're able to learn, realize the experience and spread our learning on a greater stage like this presentation. Also, you not only provide us the opportunities you offer, but also help us to establish a connection to people who are possibly helpful. Thank you all for the wonderful semester. This experience will become a valuable memory in our life and we will remember this forever. Thank you for your support. And now we are open for the Q and A.
Before we go to Q and A, let me acknowledge for the record the presence of Kate Fitzpatrick, Town Manager, who joined the meeting as the presentation got underway. Thank you. The floor is back to you.
So is there any question?
Mr. Chair, handle if the board members have any questions or comments they wish to ask the students. This would be an appropriate time.
Mr. Boylan.
Thank you. That was fascinating. Thank you to the students for the work that you've done. I'd be very interested and I don't, I'm not sure whether your group is staying together or there'll be new possible players. I'd be very curious to see this updated, the scorecard updated a year from now and maybe two years from now, because I think that the world in Needham and the world everywhere economically is going to be changing as we move, continue to move through the pandemic that we're in. And we, as the elected leaders of the town collectively try to figure out along with local, federal, regional, and state and federal, how we move forward and what it looks like. Everything has been turned upside down right now. So I don't know whether, Dan, there's been any consideration given to that. Also, the other, last question I have is, has a scorecard been done like this in other communities? And are there comparison opportunities available to us at some other time? And thank you. Thank you for all of your work.
Before you answer the question, let me state that we will go around the board for comment and question after this answer. So then we'll call on each one of the select board members and then each member of the Council of Economic Advisers for questions as well. So you may proceed. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you so much for this wonderful question. So on the first part, actually, as a lot of us going to graduating soon, ourselves probably will not be able to redo or like update this project. However, we actually like jot down our procedures and write down like in detail, like who are the contacts, where do we get those information? So in the future, when if the towns are going to have more student funding and they can actually help to update, like just by following the procedures. And we'll be make sure like in detail, those are showing our reports. And on the other hand, I think for the second questions, definitely like we can see there's a lot of changes. And like through our process, like when we do the database, we do expect that there are going to be like a lot of changes as the pandemic hated the economics. But we think like if we can using the same mattress and also we can also see that have been done by a lot of other like cities or towns. So that's why we think or why is probably the, or economic advisor board think that would be a good way for the town to use that scorecard and using those metrics and to continue more in terms of town's performance moving forward.
Thank you. Do you have any follow-up to that, John?
I guess just to follow up to Dan, who, oh, no, Dan, you're a Babson. Who is the student, the faculty advisor here who would basically continue this? Would that be Bob or Arlene?
Yeah, I guess she's on mute. She'll be getting off in a second.
Hi, that would be me. The Town of Needham is welcome to apply for another team. We can't guarantee slots. We typically have 50 to 60 different clients apply every semester. And we run 15 to 20 teams. The students choose the projects they want to work on. So we would welcome more applications and, you know, I always encourage students to work with our neighbors. Would love to work with you again, but I can't guarantee anything at this point.
Thank you.
And I'm Dan. I'd just like to kind of add on to Arlene's point. This is the second time that Needham has had student consultants in the past. And we have had such an incredible tremendous experience. And we are really grateful for the support from the Town of Needham and all six members that have worked with us week in and week out. And it's been really rewarding and it's obviously a project that students are very interested in. And we all preference this as a top project. I, as a project leader, preference this as a top project and we're lucky to be selected for it. So I do highly recommend that you apply again. I know that Arlene's saying it's competitive, but I think that Needham is competitive. So let's stick, keep that positive perspective. And this is also a possible process rolling forward that could be tracked even by employees of the town. But I do think that having additional outside support is beneficial.
Thank you. Matt Borelli, Mr. Borelli, do you have any questions or comments, Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, excellent job. And as a Babson alum, very proud of the work that you've done. You know, we always learned Babson team is the number one thing to start any project. And there's a great collaboration between your team and the Town of Needham. So excellent, excellent job. I was impressed to see the database that you collected because a lot of times when you look at businesses, you do have multiple data sets of businesses that, you know, they no longer exist or the addresses are incorrect or the zoning thing. And it's nice that you were able to compile that and kind of get a master list of what we have and then able to extrapolate things from that list. So great job with that. I had a question on zoning, because I know that was part of what you looked at. Do you think that the zoning that we have, that we should add uses? I was surprised. I know we have a lot of service industry in town. I was surprised actually about the amount that we had looking at your presentation. But are there uses that we can add to our zoning or places that you're looking at in Needham and said that would be a way to expand your business zoning? Any thoughts on the zoning in the town? Thank you again.
Does anybody want to take that?
Sam, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'll take that. So here's Sam. So for the zoning, the businesses occur into the SRB, SRA area because the single residents are so widely identified. So it's not 100% accurate that they are home businesses, but that's the best assumption we can make based on the commercial zone that they're locating into. And also, for the specific business zones, we find out that there's pretty good distribution for the businesses. Like the amount of the businesses is directly correlated to the size of each of the business zone. And also, how the town is treating them, like prioritizing them. Like take the New English Business Center, for example. We realized that this is a new area, relatively new area that the town want to focus on a lot. And got large businesses like the TripAdvisor Shark Ninja and attracting more and more businesses. And they actually hop into the largest business zone for the town. So we identified this trend and discovered that for the distribution right now, we're pretty satisfied for the current distribution. And regarding to the home businesses that you were mentioning, if they can be, if there can be some small scattered business zone within like a single resident area, within the single, like single resident A and B or even general residence area, like some like small streets with their business zoning categorization, then we can then we can identify something further, like if this is exactly within a home or that's like actual businesses just locate in the residential area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any follow up, Matt, to that before I call on Mary Ann?
No, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cooley, Marion Cooley.
Thank you all for this report. Does, does the town get to keep the database that you developed? Now that you've deduped it and all of that?
Yes, definitely. We will send you all the reports, procedures, and also along with our economic scorecard and database to the town at the end of the project.
I wish that I had received a copy of the scorecard ahead of time because we sort of just saw it on the screen during that one moment. And I Googled on the town website and I'm not finding it there either. It would have been useful to have it, but I wondered if were there items for the scorecard that you considered including and you ultimately decided not to include on the scorecard? And what were the top candidates there that you decided not to include? Curious.
Yeah. May you want to answer?
Oh, I think maybe you probably have some microphone issue. So I probably kind of talking to help with this one. So for our scorecard, we actually also consider several other category, including like safeties, transportations, which would be like also on the top priority list. And we consider that it's also important for the local business. However, we think like comparing this economic finance and commercial building and housing, which could be like more essential to those businesses, we actually limited those factors here. But like moving forward, we can definitely bring that back into consideration and to see which could be like work better to monitor its economic performance here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mo, I'm just gonna, unfortunately, I need to leave right around 10:00. So I will be leaving the meeting then, but thank you all for this.
Thank you, Marion. Dan Matthews, would you have any questions or comments you would care to make?
I think mainly comments. I, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and you've done well to get this all together. And we're all learning about the Zoom approach to doing business. I think a big takeaway for me is, I, I think we've all known that we have a significant amount of home-based business activity, including professional businesses and other, and service businesses. But the number of, of separate entities and the way that you were able to identify and, and, and clarify the databases was, was particularly helpful to me to kind of get a, get a numerical understanding of, of, of kind of in, to go along with a kind of a general sense that we've had over the years with this. So, so thank you. Thank you for the work.
Thanks, Dan. I only have a comment, not a question per se, alone. This was extremely professional work from my perspective. I'm always impressed with the professionalism of Babson students when they do work for the town. It's always been valuable. I think that particular value here is that it happened at a very transformative time in history of the town, given the pandemic and where we were in our business cycle. So I think this will be a great base going forward for future work. And I for one am very grateful. Before I call on individual members of the Council of Economic Advisers, I'd like to ask Dave Davidson if he has any comments or questions at this time, since he had such a leading role in representing the town on this project. Dave, do you have anything you'd care to say at this point?
Mr. Chairman, at first, again, I want to acknowledge the efforts of so many people who participated in this project. The representatives from the town departments, most notably Lee Newman, Daphne Collins, Roger McDonald, Tim McDonald, Director of Health and Human Services. Certainly want to acknowledge our local press who has been covering and putting pieces about the project, including the Boston Globe, the Needham Times, and the Babson social media. I certainly want to acknowledge the leadership and efforts of Adam Block and Emery Dowd from the Council of Economic Advisers, the Chair and Vice Chair. As Adam mentioned at the beginning, this project came about through an application that was prepared by Deborah Bale and our Director of Economic Development at the time. And Adam, as the Chair of the Council on Economic Advisers. This application was a competitive process. Needham was picked, as Adam mentioned, we had some keen competition and great folks to be associated with in trying for a, to be selected by Babson College, including the Red Sox, Dunkin' Donuts, Claxton Consultant, and Sally Mae, for instance. I also want to acknowledge the efforts of the business community. Certainly Greg Reben of the Chamber of Commerce were very, very helpful. He extended an invitation in met with the students. He was very gracious with his time and helping them. And, and we're very appreciative. And I knew a couple of members of the board may have to depart, so I thought it would be appropriate before we continue, that I noted the boards wanted to acknowledge the, the special efforts of the team from Babson. And Daphne, if you wouldn't mind showing, Daphne Collins, a proclamation to be offered by the Select Board and the Council of Economic Advisers to our Babson team. And Mr. Chairman, I'll just turn it back to you.
Thank you. We're taking this out of order because some of, some people have to leave. But this is the proclamation, which I will read for the record. Whereas the town of Needham submitted an application to the prestigious Babson College Management Consulting Field Experience and was successfully selected to collaborate with a team of Babson's best young minds to consult on the Needham Economic Scorecard Project. And whereas the Babson team, led by Don Edelbeck MBA 2020, consisting of Shengen, Jason Kong, graduating junior Yi Yvette Gu, a sophomore, Meng Yi Liu, a sophomore, and Ying Ying Sam Wang, a junior. And whereas Babson closed its campus on March 21st, 2020, in response to COVID-19 pandemic scattering the team all over the globe, the team persevered faithfully accomplishing the objectives and deliverables of the Needham Economic Scorecard Engagement Contract comprised of a comprehensive database of 1,361 Needham businesses, a collection of town metrics to measure the local economy, a midsemester presentation, a final report and formal presentation to a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Council of Economic Advisers today, Wednesday, April 29th, 2020, at 9:00 AM Eastern Standard Time. And now wherefore be it resolved that the Needham Select Board and the Needham Council of Economic Advisers hereby extends their deepest appreciation to Shengen Kong, Dan Edelbeck, Yi Gu, Meng Yi Liu, and Ying Ming Wang for an outstanding professional job accomplished under the most extraordinary historic circumstances. Signed this day, 29th day of April, 2020. Do I have a motion from a member of the Select Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Needham Select Board and the Council of Economic Advisers vote to sign and present the attached proclamation to each of the members of the Babson team.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fine, then I will call the role of the Needham and the Council of Economic Advisers for a voice vote. Matt Borelli.
Yes.
John Bullion.
Yes.
Marion Cooley.
She had to leave.
She had to leave. I know if she were here to vote, she would certainly support this. Dan Matthews.
Yes.
Adam Block. For the Council of Economic Advisers.
Adam, you're mute. You're mute.
I apologize. Yes, thank you.
Stu Egler.
Yes.
Bill Day.
Yes.
Anne Marie Dowd.
Yes.
Virginia Fleischer.
Yes.
Mike Wilcox.
Yes.
I appreciate your patience. This is very... Have I missed anyone? Dave Montgomery.
Yes.
Have I missed any other member of the Council of Economic Advisers? Say again.
I think Virginia and Mike Wilcox.
No, you, you got those.
Okay, sorry.
Not, not that aren't present.
Say again.
Not that aren't present.
Not that aren't present. The vote is unanimous and the proclamation will be delivered. And hopefully we can get a copy for each member of the Babson team. Thank you for going out of order, Dave. I appreciate that very much. We now come to the Council of Economic Advisers. Adam, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess a, a couple of comments. First, this is an extraordinary experience, I think, for everybody. I think from the town's perspective, we're left with two very important useful tools that will evolve and, and really become foundational elements or analytical tools as we determine and set goals for the town, economic goals and how Mr. Bullion mentioned that, that we can study these and, and the effect of change perhaps brought on by the coronavirus. And we'll be able to adapt these metrics to evaluate our economic performance going forward. It can also hopefully lead to some grants at the state level to further study our, our performance and see where there may be other areas of opportunity for public policy that can help grow and yet continue to preserve our unique character in town. I'd have to say that I cannot imagine, and I'd like to open this as a question to the group. We're dealing with such dense information from multiple sources concurrently when each of these students have other priorities and equally important projects that they're managing and suddenly have to manage through substantial disruption. You know, how are you able to, and this is my question, how are you guys able to maintain the, the rigor that you were able to bring when you were all suddenly within a function of a week dispersed across multiple points around the world?
Oh, here's Sam. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm going to respond to this question. So for our team, I think it's in terms of two, two perspectives. One is that the support that we get from all of the people working with us from town of Needham, that we were recognizing that we are receiving a tremendous support from the town of Needham people. And in terms of different perspectives, not only providing the information, but also providing all the relative, like the comprehensive supports in, in every degree. And we appreciate all the works that you guys have done with us. And that's one of the motivations for us to work. We constantly remind ourselves when we are working till like late nights, three or four o'clock, that we don't want to disappoint any of the member of the town of Needham. And the other, the other perspective is just us supporting each other through this process. We, we have a lot of projects or other things coming up for the school, but we, we would like to accommodate because we're such close friends to each other in real lives. And we do not feel distanced from each other by calling out people, such as me calling Jason to, to come up, help me to with the database at two o'clock in the morning. Jason will not, Jason will not be angry. And because of this close relationship, we're able to give feedback, direct feedbacks, and also do the works together, even over, even overloading the work to provide the best outcome we can.
And just to add on like Sam points, I think like on one hand, it is really the town support and like we've gotten treated as your guys friends. So definitely we won't let our friends down. And on the other hand, I think this like critical and challenging time is actually a great time for us and great opportunity to learn more about this experience. And I just remember there's a quote from the Kennedy, like we are, they're shooting the rocket to the moon. But because it is the challenging one, that is really best of our energy and our effort. So that's why we decided to put in our best effort to see where we are able to get as an officer's project.
Thank you. The next member of the Council of Economic Advisers, Anne Marie Dowd. Have any question?
I just have a comment. So thank you, Chair. I guess I just would like to reiterate what Adam said. I think this is strong work. And the Babson leadership from this program, I, you know, someone who in my prior life in economic development has hired McKinsey and UMass Donahue Institute to do industry sector analysis for the Commonwealth. And I have to tell you that the, it's, I mean, these were economists that I worked with. And the level of, you know, your students were new to this kind of information. They had to learn SIC codes. They, you know, they had to learn database, identify databases. They had to learn Excel. And I was, and I think our team was tremendously impressed with their dedication and their hard work. You know, not only, there are a lot of challenges here. Needham did not have a database of its, of its businesses. These kids, you know, are students. They're not from the United States. They didn't grow up in Massachusetts, let alone, you know, which has 351 cities and towns with different rules and regulations. We had the COVID pandemic where some of our students were in China. I mean, I forget which one of our students is 12 hours behind us would get up at 3:30 in the morning to attend conference calls. So the, the work that they put together and the analysis is really extraordinary. And I think for the town, having a database of the businesses, which we know is not perfect and we will continue to scrub because the databases they had were not perfect. But that is going to be an invaluable tool for the town going forward. And it could lead to more reports and studies and really beneficial opportunities for the town. So I would just say to the Babson folks on this call, thank you very much for your dedication and to the leaders of the college that are here, your, your students are extraordinary and I'm very appreciative.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Bill Day, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions, but a big thank you to the team from Babson. You did your own work. Great survey and also a thank you to the individuals in the town that helped shepherd this to what we saw today. Great work. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Going down. David Montgomery. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo a lot of the accolades already mentioned. I think this is, this has been another example of a great public-private partnership. That's a term that's used a lot, but we're seeing it in action today with excellent cooperation between students, academics and town participants. And I think it's a testament to everybody's well, well-meaning and well-trained involvement. This is the second presentation in a couple of years, maybe just a year or so. I've had, I've been privileged to witness of Babson students making presentations to Needham. And I've been impressed with both beyond measure. I think we're very fortunate that we have such international expertise here and available to us. Very grateful. So to Shengen, Yi, Meng Yu and Yi Ming, thank you very much for your capabilities. And to the faculty, Dan, Arlene and George, I had one, one, one kind of sort of parting comment, or I'd love, love to see if, if we could plant the seed somehow before your team is fully dispersed. Trying to get your ideas, if you have them, about how we might as a town create a, a simple metric or a or a measuring card where we can measure economic performance over time without having to go through this very thorough analysis that you did. But are there some simple metrics that we might try to focus in on as a way of monthly or quarterly getting ideas of how things are changing over time? I don't expect you to be able to answer that right now, but I'd love it if you were able to put your thoughts together before you're no longer working on this project and pass that off so that we might have the benefit of your thinking. Thank you again.
Thanks, David. Adam Meisner. Adam, do you have any questions or comments?
I think he's no longer at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Michael Wilcox, Mike, do you have anything to question? Any questions or comments?
Just a couple of quick, maybe, what we might otherwise file under future work for this. I think it's a great starting point, great database. The candidates and services was such a arch. You represent businesses. You had a screen that broke down, more specifically, what that entailed, whether it would be better presented by different sectors when you sort of break down all the businesses so we have a better sense of what we're talking about. There'd be legal or financial services, et cetera, because for tracking purposes, that may be going forward. The other thing, I thought that perhaps going forward, there may be a better way to look at some of these sectors by scale. And I don't know whether that information is available, but like by number of employees or square footage or sort of seeing and maybe working in offices, a way to sort of look on a scale of the size of businesses. Again, I don't know whether that's sales volume or employees, but just so that we have relative information about the different organizations. And then one small wordsmithing. We prefer to use Needham Crossing now instead of the New England Business Centers. Wouldn't mind using that going forward. That's more in keeping with how we define the park, which I know has had a number of different names over the years, but that's the one we have now. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike. Does anybody on the project team have any comment with respect to Mike's observation that there may be other?
Yeah, if I may. Thank you so much, Chairman. And Mike, thank you so much for your question. I think you make a couple of good points. So you talked about how services is by far the largest category, and then we were able to break down sub-industries within services. The reason we kept it that way is because we were trying to keep the standardization. So SIC codes are broken down specifically by specific categories. And so we follow the same standardization, and we can maintain that. So it's good for Needham to be able to follow the same processes that, you know, state and federal levels are looking at as far as industries. So within SIC codes, within services, we broke it down into sub-industries. So that's something that we could continue to do. And then your question around opportunities for sales volume of businesses and amount of employees and understanding the weight and impact of specific sub-industries. We do have all of that in the comprehensive database. The reason that we didn't include some of that data is because we didn't have the amount of substantive data for each business. So some of them, we're still verifying some of that information, or some of it wasn't substantive enough to be able to draw really conclusive insights. But that is something that can be done in the future, and that data is public in the complete business registry database.
If I may, the hope would be that we can take this report that the students prepared, and it could be the basis of an additional report that would study perhaps within, you know, another, either Babson students or UMass Donahue Institute or another organization that could then study the economic impact of the different sectors. And they could analyze by company, you know, what they pay in terms of number of employees, what they pay in salary. And the report could end up showing what by sector, you know, what the economic impact of each sector is on Needham in terms of direct, indirect, and induced economic impact. And that would be something that would be helpful. And having this report could help us potentially get funding to help go to the next step to do that analysis.
For the record, that was Anne Marie Dowd. Thank you, Anne Marie, for the clarification.
And could I just add one more thing? This is, Dan, you go back to your point. Anne Marie, I think before we go to that next step that you guys are looking at, Mike and Anne Marie, we want to really identify what are limitations. As these are private businesses, their revenues, their amount of employees, their profits, a lot of information is not necessarily need to be disclosed. And if we might be getting that from some sources, we need to be verifying the quality of those sources. So I think we kind of want to set a baseline after we use the database that we have, what additional insights we might draw based on what is realistic to collect and what data might be the most accurate and what might not be accurate.
Thank you. Next member of the Council of Economic Advisers, Bob Henshaw. Are you still on, Bob? And do you have any questions or comments?
I don't see Bob. He was on, but I think he's no longer on the call.
Okay, then we'll go next to Stu Agler. Stu, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me echo everyone's comments. The database is really the star here. Really, the amount of wide data you guys had to weed through to get something that was meaningful, really, really great work. I just have one question. Needham has a bit of a reputation as a restaurant town. You know, the different types of restaurants, eateries, et cetera. Did you guys see anything in the data that talked about that, the value of it, what we can do with that? It just seems like a really attractive part of what, you know, brings people to Needham, and wondering if you had any insight or thoughts about that.
Yes, so in terms of the sub-industries, we can identify a lot of the restaurants. But because restaurants are identified in different way, and if we generalize them as restaurants, it might lose some critical information, such as the style of the food, what kind of things they're focusing on. So we decide to keep all of the restaurants, how they're classified, such as Chinese restaurant, Indian restaurant, pizza, cafe. So you cannot really see restaurant as a big sector of the sub-industry distribution, but exist and identify in unique way belongs to each of it, how they place themselves relating to the restaurant industry. So, yeah, that's how we deal with the restaurants in the sub-industry categories.
Thank you. Virginia Fleischer, hi, Virginia. Last but not least.
Yes, well, it's, I want to reiterate, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to reiterate, this is such an impressive group of students, and your work is so amazing, and you did it all in the face of huge challenges. So many thank yous to you and the town people that helped. I have a question. So the database is really impressive, and I'm just wondering, are there any lessons learned you can share with us as we try to take your tool and go forward about things we could collect on the early side of things? Through that, because I know you use one town database to build it. Or what can you, what words of wisdom can you students give us on how to have better data coming in so that we can use it to go forward?
So I'm just going to talk about, like, for me, the two things we identify by ourselves are the industries, including like sub-industries, and also the zoning, the zoning in the zoning categories. And in terms of the industries, because we can generalize the industry of a business based on a SIC code. So if you want to know about the general industry distribution, the SIC code will do it. And in terms of the sub-industry, we would recommend doing it based on a questionnaire, like a multiple choice, so that there's a defined answer. So the sub-industries can be categorized and concluded because different businesses have different understanding of themselves. They might call themselves different names by having the same core. And also in terms of the business zones, the business zone information is tough to collect. We actually did that by looking at the Google map and the zoning map one by one and throughout all of the businesses we did. And because of this, either collecting the business zone information directly when you're gathering the information about the business or have a virtual map file that will have business zones built into that virtual map, potentially will do the work. Because the map currently is just a PDF, it's just a picture. If it's like a file that you can actually categorize within it and search within the virtual map, that can also do the job of characterizing future new businesses.
Interesting.
Yeah, any follow-up to that, Virginia?
No, that's a great suggestion. So I don't know if those type of things will be submitted in any kind of final comments, but I would think that'd be a good suggestion that then we could think and talk about going forward in our data collection.
Thank you. Before I call on our town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick, to make some concluding comments, I'd like to ask Lee Newman if she has any questions or comments. Lee Newman, the Planning Director, Needham Community Development Director, actually.
I would just like to kind of reiterate what the other members of the team said, Anne Marie, and Adam, and Dave Davison, and Daphne, that it was really a pleasure to work with all of you students. You produced a really professional-level product. And I think it's not often in life that we're able to engage ourselves in work that actually has an impact on people's lives. And I think the tool that you've given us, especially in the context of this pandemic, will give us a baseline to be able to measure changes that are happening in the Needham economy as a result of this economic disruption. And so I think it's probably very rewarding for you to have been engaged in a product that you know is going to have such a positive impact on people's lives and inform policy and decision-making going forward. I think one of the takeaways for me in terms of zoning and changes maybe the town needs to be thinking about that comes to light as a result of this work is that so many of the businesses are located in our residential districts, and we really haven't updated our definitional section, which relates to home-related businesses. And I think we probably need to take a look at that land use and update it to reflect the current reality of what's actually occurring and the nature and the scope of businesses within those districts. So again, thank you very much for your hard work. It was a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you, Lee. Now, for concluding comments, questions, or remarks, our town manager, Kate Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wish I had gotten an opportunity to meet the team. I was out of town the last week that you were working, and then the pandemic happened. I myself, in all my years of work and in graduate school, worked on a lot of group projects that I know really didn't add a lot of value when push comes to shove. And this one is really different, and I think you should be so proud of yourselves. I also wanted to just really thank Babson. The town, in the last several years, has really been working to strengthen our ties with Babson, and we've been doing that a lot of different ways. And this is just a great example of how our community partners can really add value to the town, and we hope that we can help Babson as well. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Kate. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So I'm moved. Second.
Who made the motion? John Bullion made the motion. Who seconded?
Matt.
Matt Borelli seconded. So I will call the role of the Select Board.
Mr. Chairman, before you call it, if I could, Dan Matthews again. I just want to say thank you again. We've had a long meeting over renewed technology and a great presentation. Just wanted to say thanks again. My vote.
I don't want to leave Dan with the last word from the board, if anybody else. I also want to say before we vote on the motion. Okay. Matt Borelli.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bullion.
Yes.
Mo Handle votes, yes. Have I left anybody out? No. Now for the Council of Economic Advisers, Adam Block.
Yes.
Anne Marie Dowd.
Yes.
Adam Meisner.
He's absent.
Absent. Bill Day.
Yes.
David Montgomery.
Yes.
Mike Wilcox.
Yes.
Thank you. Bob Henshaw, not here. Stu Agler.
I believe he's gone as well.
Okay, and then Virginia Fleischer.
Yes.
It is unanimous. This meeting is adjourned. I would like to thank everybody from both boards, town staff, but most especially the very high-quality, very professional, hard-working students of Babson, all of whom I am sure will have stellar careers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
John, team.